I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, May 20th, 2024. The time is 7 o'clock. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone?
Here.
John Caesaretti?
Here.
Anne Hart?
Here.
Bonnie Kim?
Here.
Allison Pathless?
Here.
Amy Peeling?
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabebs?
Here.
Principal Jackie Brennan is here with some Harper Dolphins to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Jackie, if you angle just a little bit more, some of their parents who are sitting here might also be able to see them. Run back just a little bit so that you're also facing your families. Perfect. There are so many people here who want to celebrate with you. We're so excited to hear from you.
Good evening, Board. I am very honored to be here tonight with some of my incredible Harper Dolphins here to talk to you a little bit about their experience in the Harper Beautification Committee. We have some slides prepared that we are going to display, and my amazing art teacher, Ms. T., who runs that committee, is going to talk through her work with these students.
So the goal of the Harper Beautification Committee, oh, sorry, the next one, is to help students strengthen their problem-solving skills and their communication skills in an organic environment while creating long-lasting, beautiful pieces of artwork for the entire Harper community to enjoy. Next slide. So for the art-making process, the students would begin by discussing the art project as a group and sharing ideas. They each would then create their own design on a scratch piece of paper, and they would come together and share their designs and select one design for the final project. As the students were working on their project, they would break the project into different steps and help each other by collaborating. Next slide, please. So there were three main projects that the students created. They created lots of projects throughout the school year, but these were the ones that made the biggest impact this school year. The first one was painting over four green benches. The next one was painting over four large canvases. And the last one was creating car line posters. Before we share the beautiful pieces of artwork, I would like for the students to introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Caroline Cho. I'm in 4th grade, and I helped create the 4th grade bench. My favorite part of being in the art group is getting to meet new people that I probably wouldn't have played with if it weren't for being in the group.
Hi, my name is Rosemary. I'm in 2nd grade. I helped to create a bench. My favorite part of being in this art group is working with other students to create one art project.
Hi, my name is Eliza. I am in 1st grade. I helped create the bench. My favorite part of being in the art group is making designs.
Hi, my name's Yuni. I'm in 1st grade. I helped make the 1st grade bench. My favorite part of being in the art group is because my art gets shown.
Hi, my name is Lily. I am in the 1st grade. I helped to create the car signs. My favorite part of being in the art group was working with friends.
Hi, my name is Bennett. I'm in 3rd grade. I helped to create a bench. My favorite part of being in the art group is collaborating to color the bench.
Hi, my name is Asher. I am in 3rd grade. I helped to create a bench. My favorite part of being in the art group is to communicate and just be yourself.
Hi, my name is Hannah Callahan. I'm in 3rd grade. I made the Harper Car Line posters. My favorite part was being with friends and helping others.
Hi, my name is June Rubeck. I'm in the 3rd grade, and I helped create the 3rd grade bench. And my favorite part of being in the art group was collaborating with fellow students.
Hi, my name is Georgie Bart. I am in 4th grade, and I made the 4th grade canvas. My favorite part about being in this group is knowing that everyone here likes art as much as I do.
Now, I bet you're all wondering what these art projects look like. We have a few photos. Tony, if you don't mind flipping through, you'll see some of the benches that the students just discussed. Those are sitting in the main hallway of Harper, so their artwork will continue to live on. The next few slides are also showing canvases that are hung up in our lunchroom that decorate all of the halls in there. And my favorite part of the art group is the last project that you will see, which is Car Line Reminders. I think our families really value having those reminders via art and not my newsletter.
Now, stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance reads to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for coming to share your artwork pictures with us. I really liked the color choices you made, and I noticed that some of the Dolphins were wearing hats and helmets. I liked that choice as well. You are the best part of our meeting. Thank you for being so brave and for doing all that you've done to help make Harper a more beautiful place. So what's gonna... Yes. So what's gonna happen now is you're gonna come get in a line over here. You may have noticed there's some D-39 merch over here that you will be taking home with you. So I'm gonna hand that to you, and then you can go meet your parents in the hall. Thank you again for being here.
Parents, thank you so much for being here this evening as well.
Okay. All right, so we are going to move on to some staff recognition. We're doing a couple things a little out of our original order, but we will get there. We're gonna do our staff recognition. Turning this over to Dr. Kremis-Colee.
Thank you. It is my honor. We have so many outstanding staff members here in District 39, and many incredible nurses. This evening, we'd like to honor one in particular who went above and beyond and made a huge difference. Cindy?
Oh, thank you all for inviting us here tonight. This is Mary Ann Roach, our incredible nurse, and we just celebrated our School Nurse Appreciation Day. And I'm gonna try not to get emotional. But this year, Mary Ann stepped beyond what a typical school nurse does, and I'm gonna read a letter. This is Mrs. Kalbasa, Emily, and I'm gonna read a letter from Emily and Dawn about what Mary Ann did for their family. Dear Mary Ann, thank you with all our hearts for your brave actions and exceptional life-saving abilities during the school pickup a few months ago. Our nanny is so much more than a nanny to us. Not only has she been with us for almost eight years, she's like a mom to me, a grandma to the kids, the household chef, and literally is family to us. She travels on our vacations, attends the kids' music performances and birthday parties, and has been like an angel to us. The day she went to go pick up our daughter from school at Ramona, there was an angel watching over her. That angel was Mary Ann. We cannot thank you enough for your amazing heroic acts, literally saving her life. I wanted to thank the entire staff at Ramona as well for jumping in and making sure our daughter didn't see or hear anything traumatizing. I'm so thankful for everyone in the office and for the crossing guards who assisted and went outside their duties to help our family. To this day, our daughter just thinks her nana didn't drink enough water and painted. Thank goodness our nanny's doctors have completely cleared her to resume to regular activities. She has no restrictions, and she is looking and feeling amazing. We need to celebrate the fact that our community has something truly magical at Ramona, a staff of teachers, office staff, crossing guards, administrators, and of course, a school nurse who care and go the extra miles to keep our families and children happy and safe. Thank you all. Thank you to Mary Ann. Big round of applause for our nurse.
Thanks for reading that for me. I would probably have gotten too emotional, but I really believe that this is a magical community. Ramona is amazing and all of the staff and the way they jumped in for an emergency, but also on regular days, just staying happy and helpful and keeping us all safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Thank you. We are blown away by the service that you performed on behalf of someone else who was in distress. And you also get merch.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you, Cindy. Thanks for being here.
Okay. Principal Kate Dominique is here to recognize several groups of Willmet Junior High students.
Good evening, everyone. So we have students here from Willmet Junior High School who participated in Science Olympiad, the Latin exam, and the French exam. And we believe that participating in extracurriculars that extend learning beyond the classroom and really require students to activate skills that we think are really important for the 21st century, like collaboration and communication and teamwork, we really want to just celebrate and recognize all of our students for going above and beyond. And so they are here tonight, and we're excited to recognize them.
I think the certificates are outside.
Certificates and the merch are outside. Kraus was gonna meet them out there.
Ms. Dominique, do you have names to read, or shall we...
Oh, no, I was gonna use the certificate.
Oh, let's grab the certificates. Great, thank you.
Okay, my apologies. I'm sorry.
Let me help, let me help.
Okay. So we are gonna start with Science Olympiad. And so Benjamin Berlin? Once you come up and get your certificate, we're gonna have you stand right over here, and Mr. Kraus is gonna get you some merchandise. Nathan Butkus? Eric Cha? Bohan Chen? Alexis Garachi? Franklin Shi? Madeline Zhang? Fredericke Klickspel? Alicia Lee? Catherine Lee? Julia Limbrak? Dahlia McGann? Kavya Marali? Gargi Nidiger? Inez Patriello? Lucas Pritz? Michelle Wren? Henry Rogers? Aparna Roy? Yishan Shah? Sophie Zheng? Congratulations to all of our students who participated in Science Olympiad. Okay, Latin exam students. Congratulations to all of our students who participated in the Latin exam. First up, we have Garrett Estabrook. Evelyn Newman. Eva Gerz. We have merch for you too, so make sure you stop by Mr. Kraus on your way. John Quackenbush. Jude Meyer. Nathaniel Pachalek. All right, congratulations to our National Latin Exam students. And last, but not least, our French exam students. Okay, Chloe Abendraff. Congratulations. Taylor Agastinelli. Julia Marzuk. Dominic Cadlec. Jack Pennell. Sophia Fratini. Noah Majestro. Congratulations to all of our students again. We feel like these clubs are really important, and so thank you for your support. Thank you, parents, for your support. Oh, okay. We didn't miss anyone? Okay, okay.
All right. I will direct your attention to the lovely artwork behind me. The Harper Art Showcase is on display in the boardroom this month. A vast variety of artwork highlights the Dolphin Parade, self-portraits, maps, texture painting, identity logos, color monsters, animated gifts, kente cloth, Myanmar sand paintings, biological illustrations, Scandinavian folk art, watercolor landscapes, value paintings, cut-paper stop motion, Samburu sculptures, and Las Malas-inspired prints. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the April 29th, 2024 Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the Board of Education minutes for April 29th, 2024, Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Peeling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabebs?
Yes.
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries. This is the first opportunity for the public to address the board. Are there any community members who wish to speak at this time? Okay. We're moving on to board reports. We'll start with our committee's school finance. Mr. Caesaretti?
All right. So during the committee of the whole on Monday, May 13th, we discussed, we had two major discussions. The first one was the FY25 draft budget presentation. Mr. Boltmeyer shared the draft budget, which included an in-depth look at the key revenue and expenditure items for the district. The FY2025 budget is similar to the most recent five-year budget projections for FY25. The district is gonna be in a strong position and remains above our goal of 40% fund balance. Mr. Boltmeyer also walked us through the transportation contracts, which we're gonna be renewing today. So it's time for the district to renew transportation contracts for regular and special education services. The contract renewals will be for one year. Mr. Boltmeyer shared the fees and expense increases to North Shore Transit, which provided some context as to why the renewal increases exceed the most recent annual inflation measures. And that was it.
Thank you. Strategy, Mrs. Schneider-Fabebs.
Thank you. So the Strategy Committee also met during the May 13th committee of the whole. Katie Lee shared updates on the work of the Curriculum Review Committee in the areas of elementary mathematics, middle and junior high school social studies, and English Language Arts, Primary Gates, grades, K through 2. Using these updates, she shared the types of curriculum reviews that take place under the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, highlighting how District 39 values teacher voice input and the process for collaborative decision-making.
All right, thank you. We're moving on to liaison reports. Back to you, Mrs. Schneider-Fabebs, for the Community Review Committee or CRC report.
Yep. So Dr. Kremis-Colee and I attended last week. The CRC talks about recruitment for next year's CRC membership. They are looking for new members for next year. The committee discussed whether or not it's better to decide on the topic that they're gonna study in the spring or in the fall. There were pros and cons to each. And so they landed on, they were gonna discuss possible topics for next year at the next meeting, and then vote on the topic in the fall. They also discussed changes to the bylaws. The last amendments were in 2016. The changes that they passed were meant to reflect how CRC is structured today, given it's been eight years since they were established. They did a final review of the report, which we're gonna hear about tonight, and they voted on the report that we're gonna talk about.
Great, thank you. Educational Foundation, I think I'm turning this over to Dr. Kremis-Colee.
That's right. Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending the Educational Foundation meeting this month, and there was quite a lot that was reviewed at this month's meeting. First and foremost, they welcomed new trustees. They were voted to join the group for the upcoming year, and we have just an outstanding new group of trustees and many returning as well. So we're really appreciative for their time and investment in our community. We also talked through a number of special projects, including the art grants, STEAM in the Real World, and our D-39 Plaque, which are forthcoming. We talked a little bit about some of the new projects that we've been doing, including the video project that Mr. Demonte is leading. And then we talked about some of the events. Our past event, Pickle Night, on April 27th, was a huge success. And then, at the time it was coming up, I think it was another big success, was Movie Night on May 17th, watching the movie IF for our students and families. And it was a great celebration. They also reviewed their budget and are looking to have another fantastic year in the upcoming school year. So talked a little bit about adjusting their schedule for next year, so as they make decisions there, I'll make sure and keep the board apprised of that as well. Just, we're really, really thankful for all that the Ed Foundation does for us.
Thank you. The District Strategic Advisory Team, or DSAT, Mrs. Peeling and Mrs. Pathless.
I think there's no update. We haven't met since the last board meeting. We have our third meeting on May 30th, and then the fourth one on June 20th.
All right, thank you. The Willmet Village Intergovernmental Cooperation Working Group, Mrs. Kim and Mrs. Schneider-Fabebs. Have you had a meeting?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB, Mrs. Pathless.
Thank you. IASB is now accepting resolutions from member school boards for consideration by the 2024 Delegate Assembly. That deadline is June 26th. The 2024 Joint Annual Conference registration opens on June 3rd. And just a reminder, the conference is November 22nd to the 24th in Chicago.
All right, thank you. Legislative update, Mrs. Pathless.
Yeah, thank you. We are in the last stretch of the legislative session in Springfield. The tentative adjournment date is May 24th, but that may be extended. There has been a flurry of work in the last couple of weeks related to the annual state budget. It's still unclear what will be included in the finalized budget, but we'll continue to monitor that. Bills should be through the third reading by now. And there are several bills that received extensions for the third reading. Regardless, many of these bills are expected to move quickly through the originating chamber and then the opposing chamber before the session concludes. So we'll just keep our eye on that.
All right, thank you. We are moving on to information items. The first is written communication. Dr. Kremis-Colee?
Thank you. The board did not receive any written communication in this last month for us to report, but we do have several administrative announcements from myself and our staff. First of all, as we all are well aware, the school year is starting to come to a close. And so there are many celebrations and performances scheduled for the end of the year, and we look forward to celebrating all these special moments with our students, our staff, and our families. Each of our schools enjoys special traditions at the end of the school year, and we're especially appreciative of each of our PTAs and PTOs for their support of these events and traditions. In addition, each of our schools are hosting various concerts and performances as well. If you have the opportunity to get out and enjoy one of those, I would encourage you to do so. And I want to thank all of our students and staff for all of their extra effort to make the end of the year so special and memorable. It has been a great year, and we are really excited to celebrate it together. As a reminder to our board members, please mark your calendars for 8th grade graduation, which this year will be held all together at Nutria Campus on June 5th. We're really excited to be able to host all of our students in promotion at the same event. So please join us for that. Speaking of celebrations, we have our reflection celebration coming up this week. In addition to celebrating our students, we are also very excited to celebrate our staff with our annual end-of-the-year reflection. staff with our annual End of the Year Reflections Celebration. Reflections is our annual district-wide celebration of retirees and employees who have reached important milestones in their careers in District 39. This year, we have 18 retirees who will be honored at the event, along with 49 additional employees who will be celebrated for having reached important milestones within their career here in District 39. We look forward to celebrating with everyone this coming Wednesday and hope that some of you can join us. Next up is staffing. As is customary at this time of year, we make some reports to the board on staffing. We're continuing to plan and prepare for the upcoming school year, and part of this work includes the hiring of new teachers and administrators for vacant positions. Later on this evening's agenda, Dr. Glawacki will present the 2425 Student and Staff Planning Report. This annual report provides a summary of our current staffing and planning for the upcoming school year based on current enrollment. This year, we have seen outstanding interest in our positions, in our postings for teachers and for other certified staff members, and we're really excited about the candidates being considered for these positions. This evening on the personnel agenda, we have several fantastic teachers and administrators and staff who are recommended for hire, and I'd like to take a moment to introduce to the board and to our community two of these individuals. One is here with us this evening, the other wasn't able to join us, but Jeff Bat and Robert Miller are recommended this evening to serve as our next grade-level administrators at Wilmette Junior High School. Mr. Bat will be assigned to work primarily with 8th grade students and staff, and Mr. Miller with 7th grade. I'll mention Mr. Bat first. He was not able to join us this evening, but he joins District 39 after nine years at Lane Tech College Prep in Chicago. He has spent those nine years at the Northside Selective Enrollment School, teaching chemistry and serving as chemistry lead teacher for five years, before moving into a leadership position at Lane Tech's Science Department, as Lane Tech's Science Department Chair in that role. He oversaw a 40-person department, leading and coaching classroom teachers, discussing strategies to engage students in inquiry-driven instruction, and facilitating cross-curricular discussions to help develop a more integrative curriculum. We're really excited about his candidacy, and we'll make sure to introduce him to you when he is available. He'll be joining us in starting over the summer. And we also have Mr. Miller, and I know Mr. Miller was able to join us this evening, so I'd invite you just to come up and be recognized if you wouldn't mind doing us the honor. I'll read a little bit about you while you make your approach to the podium. Mr. Robert Miller joins us in our District 39 family from the West Suburban Wheaton area, where he spent 10 years as a mathematics teacher, the last nine at Edison Middle School. He serves as Edison's Instructional Leadership, on Edison's Instructional Leadership Team, which focuses on analyzing data towards reaching school improvement goals, and has collaborated with district-level administration and colleagues on selecting and implementing a new math curriculum. We're really excited for him to share his educational leadership skills and ability, and to mentor students here in his new role. Mr. Miller, we're really glad to have you joining us. Thank you so much for making the time to be here with us this evening. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much for having me. This is such an incredible opportunity and just an amazing district to be joining and being a part of. I'm very excited to begin this new journey for myself, and being able to build relationships with the students, getting to know the staff, and just the district in general, and building that relationship with the communities. Thank you very much, very excited.
We really are very, very fortunate to have outstanding candidates for our district positions and welcome them all. We're excited to have our board and our community meet and get to know each and every one of the candidates who are recommended this evening. Thanks for being here. Freedom of Information Acts, the district also did not receive or process any FOIA requests this month, so we'll move on to annual business.
Thank you. Am I turning it back over to you?
You can, sure, I'll take it. Okay, the first item up is our Community Review Committee, presenting their report, harnessing the power of free play to advance educational outcomes. We're really very fortunate to have representatives from our District 39 Community Review Committee here with us this evening to present their report, harnessing the power of free play to advance educational outcomes. This report is the culmination of many, many, many hours of collaboration, work, research, thousands of hours in study on this topic. Our CRC brings together parents, community members, teachers, administrators, and other support staff who contributed to this important work this year to study a chosen topic and to provide the board with a report of recommendations and suggestions. In past years, their work has led to significant, meaningful, and sustained changes to the work we do within our District 39 schools, and we're really so appreciative of their contributions and continued efforts in support. This evening, representing the CRC, I'm pleased to introduce Najah Masakyo, President of CRC, and Amy Peters, Vice President of the CRC. Thanks for being here with us today.
Thank you very much for having us. Can you hear me okay? I'm on the mic. All right, so we are very excited to share our report findings with you all tonight. Is it advanced? Thank you to the Board of Education members who attended our committee meetings this year, and also thank you, next slide, all of the amazing, incredible CRC members that worked so hard this year on our research topic. Next slide. So what is free play? Has anybody here ever played before? Okay, that's a really bad dad joke to open, but free play is a universal drive in kids. It's a developmental necessity required for optimal cognitive, emotional, social, and physical development in children, and the benefits derive from children being the driving force with what they want to play and then how they want to play. And when they shape their own play, this may involve navigating the challenges and complexities of group dynamics. By nature, free play involves risk-taking and problem-solving, and so it promotes independence, resilience, and confidence. Next slide. So we chose this topic because access to free play has dramatically declined in American schools and in society since the 1980s. Today, children spend far more time in adult-directed structured activities, or in a car, driving to an activity, or on a screen than we did in the 80s and 90s. And that's for several reasons, but there is more value or emphasis placed on these adult-directed activities, and then also because of rising fears in adults about safety. There have been some recent calls to reinstate free play, including, there was an article in the Journal of Pediatrics last year, that, that's like a preeminent journal for pediatricians, that described how this trend towards reduced play, or the play gap, plays into the current mental health crisis in youth. Next slide. So the CRC wanted to know what are the benefits of play, what are the challenges, how do local schools facilitate play, and then how do organizations across the country and across the world promote play, and what are the measured outcomes? Next slide. So we distributed surveys to local K through 8 school districts to their administrators, and we found that recess time shrinks with age, with many older students not having access to any recess. And nearly all of the recess supervisors said that they, the recess, I'm sorry, nearly all of the administrators said that recess supervisors tried to prevent all injuries, so including minor injuries like bruises from jumping off of a swing, and intervene in name-calling and arguing. They were more split about the role in social conflict, so in terms of do supervisors intervene to make sure that everybody who wants to play is included in play, and whether supervisors enforce rules of games that are played during recess. They also demonstrated interest in professional development, and a few provided loose parts. Next slide.
All right, thank you. So free play itself is in line with District 39's mission and goals, and supports the development of many of the characteristics found in the D-39 Portrait of a Scholar, including resilient, innovator, collaborator, and risk-taker. The research presented in our report documents the results of numerous studies that show how free play positively impacts academic outcomes. Free play helps increase students' ability to attend, self-regulate, helps increase their working memory, and promotes critical and creative thinking. When students engage in free play, they have the opportunity to work on social skills, including their ability to communicate their wants and needs, collaborate with others, and demonstrate empathy. The AAP has stated that these skills may be learned best in unstructured environments. Free play gives students the opportunity to work on those skills in the real world. Studies have shown that free play helps contribute to reduce stress, improve mood and resilience, and an increase in coping skills. Free play also contributes positively to children's physical health and aligns with the CDC recommendation for at least 60 minutes of daily exercise. Free play can have a positive impact on the learning environment for both students and staff. Free play renews student concentration and reduces disruptive behaviors within the classroom. Free play has been shown to contribute to a positive school culture by reducing incidents of bullying, improving social inclusion, and improving academic performance. So as part of free play, risk is inherent in free play and provides important benefits. And one of the things we wanted to make sure to differentiate between is a risk and a hazard. A risk is a challenge someone can problem-solve how to address, while a hazard is something that one is unable to perhaps notice or manage. For example, the height of a climbing structure may be seen as a risk to a student climbing it the first time, while that structure not being properly maintained or secured is a hazard. We are not advocating for any additional hazards in the lives of our students, but perhaps some increased opportunities to take risks. Risky play is a natural biological drive that teaches children how to persevere when faced with risks and make decisions to keep themselves safe. Minor injuries or insults that occur during any play help teach children their limits, the limits of others, and refine their risk-assessment skills. Risky play helps students become antiphobic by being better able to differentiate between threatening and non-threatening situations, instead of overestimating the danger in relatively safe settings, which can cause anxiety. Engaging in risky play helps children develop self-control. Using roughhousing as an example, learning how much force you can use before others don't want to play with you helps children better understand the limits of their own behaviors and what is acceptable to others. As adults, we have increasingly limited free play due to our fears about safety, but often those fears are overblown. Research shows that efforts to restrict play in the name of safety have not significantly reduced injury rates and can actually increase injuries when children do not have the skills to assess risk realistically. Children need the opportunity to take risks and reflect on the outcomes of their actions. Without practicing this in childhood, children may become risk-incompetent as they lack the skills and judgment to protect themselves and understand their own physical and emotional limits. We can increase students' risk tolerance and problem-solving skills by making play as safe as necessary instead of as safe as possible. We do want students to be exposed to risks. To do so, we need to weigh the benefits of play versus the risk of a serious injury whose likelihood is often very small. As adults, we need to retrain ourselves not to immediately intervene when we see children taking risks. The best step we can take as adults is to pause and wait before intervening. Often during that very brief pause, children will be able to work out a situation on their own. Within the appendix of the report is a table with specific language that we as adults can use that helps children assess the risks in front of them if intervention is needed. Free play allows children to navigate social experiences on their own, both positive and negative. Every one of us experiences social conflict in our lives, and learning these skills early on helps us better navigate social conflict later in life when the stakes may be much higher. We have seen a cultural shift towards adults intervening with the intention to prevent any uncomfortable or upsetting social experiences. However, by doing so, we are preventing our children from learning how to navigate these situations and internalize these valuable life skills. As a culture, we can shift our mindset towards seeing these experiences as powerful opportunities for learning and growth.
So there were a number of programs enhancing free play that were detailed in our report that have been evaluated in research studies or described in observational reports, and generally, these programs were at no cost or minimal cost, and many of these implementation guides are available online for free. Some of them are even funded by governments, like the UK government. And these programs tend to look at enhancing the quantity of play, like increasing time for recess during the school day, or increasing access to play before or after school, and/or enhance the quality of play, so making play more aligned with free play principles. And they do that by providing loose parts, by reducing adult intervention in social conflict and risky play, through professional development to help support decision-making around intervening in play, and by communicating with students and families and collaborating with them about the benefits of free play and expectations for intervention. So this is a slide of a lot of kids playing with a lot of loose parts. Loose parts have no specific purpose, they're used however you want them, and they can be found in recycling bins, in the garbage. Parents can sometimes donate these to schools. Some schools have enlisted PTOs to help get donation drives or get them from local businesses. And the benefits of loose parts are different from that of fixed equipment. Fixed equipment, like traditional swings or a slide. That's because loose parts enhance creativity, as you can see. I mean, these can be used in five quadrillion different ways. And they also uniquely enhance social interaction, so particularly for neurodivergent children or kids who have different communication styles or languages, this can be a really great strategy to try to help with social inclusion, and it can be a nice strategy too for indoor recess. So what happened when schools enhanced free play? This slide summarizes the benefits that schools reported. Some of these results might seem counterintuitive, and we highlighted the ones at the top, because as an adult, I might think like, okay, so if adults step back a little bit, it's gonna be mayhem, like there might be injuries or fighting. And actually, it was really interesting, the schools actually observed the exact opposite. So there were fewer injuries and accidents, there were fewer behavioral issues, there was less of a need to kick up behavioral issues like up the tree or whatever to an administrator. There were fewer social disputes. Kids asked for help resolving conflicts less. Teachers said that there were less disruptions to class where arguments would normally spill in after recess. There was less bullying, there was more inclusion, more kids were engaged in play, they were more physically active, kids were happier, less anxious, they focused better. Teachers said that they were able to spend more time in instruction, because when kids came back from the play breaks, they were ready to go. They were ready to listen and learn, and teachers spent less time trying to manage behavioral issues. So the teachers felt more confident in supervising recess, and they received positive parent feedback. So our recommendation is to enhance free play to promote positive educational outcomes and childhood independence and resilience by channeling some of these evidence-based models and by taking a whole-school approach, so involving families, students, and staff. Our strategic recommendations are to value free play as a necessity and an effective key promoter of core SEL skills, value allowing kids to work through social conflicts. Two, take a holistic approach to safety, considering the benefits of play versus the risk of serious injury. Consider that overprotection can limit the development of physical and risk-management skills and can actually make kids less safe. Three, consider whether recess duration is adequate to renew concentration and improve behavior, especially for the older kids. Our research suggested that the self-chosen aspect of play was the key to renewing concentration. So just as for us, if we're at work all day during a break, we want to do what we want to do. That's the best way we can find to rejuvenate ourselves. So consider, could play be an effective alternative maybe to something more structured like an adult-led movement break? like an adult-led movement break? And then number four, investigate professional development in terms of supporting staff in assessing and limiting play, and think about some of our recess rules to see, do some of them maybe inhibit free play unnecessarily? Like wonder, are we as adults contributing to children developing excessive fear about the world around them? Five, provide a way of choices for indoor and outdoor recess, including loose parts and those that are not technology-based. Six, investigate parent education regarding how play benefits skill-building, reasonable risk tolerance, and expectations for supervision. Seven, encourage play before and after school on school grounds, letting parents know that kids who are biking to school, playing before school, are going to be ready to go. They'll be more ready to go in the mornings. They'll be better able to concentrate, they will be better behaved, and they'll feel less stress. And that for families who are experiencing some challenges with their kids struggling socially, that this can be a really nice way for kids to meet and interact with children that are not within the circle that they're already in if they play before or after school. And number eight, audit district processes regarding the withdrawal of recess privileges for academic or disciplinary reasons, and that's in line with the AAP and ISB recommendations, that this can sometimes be counterproductive. And then that's it. And we left you with this quote here to consider. Thank you very much for everything, for having us here, yeah.
Thank you very much for all of your hard work and the amount of time you spent on this on such an important and timely topic. Board members, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have comments.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, oh, thank you so much. It was incredibly well-written, great presentation. I loved the idea. It's so timely. It's wonderful. Thank you. One of the best.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
I was just going to say that I thought that the paper was so incredibly well-written and organized and easy to follow that I really appreciated it, and I thought it was great. I had one question about free play and how it's, is it more effective in younger children or as they get older, do they still enjoy free play, like seventh and eighth graders versus, I don't know if you know, but versus elementary school kids?
I mean, I would say, you know, one of the things we really found is that as students get older, they don't have as much access to it. But that play is beneficial at those early ages. I think we typically think right about play in elementary school. You know, I have a child who's in elementary school, and just kind of think that a sixth grader isn't interested. They still need that time to themselves to choose what they want to do, to work on those social skills. And it, you know, works to their benefit and then to the benefit of the entire school community. So I guess the short answer to your question would be, yes, it's beneficial, I think, at all ages.
The American Academy of Pediatrics, in 2013, they published the crucial role of recess and as a policy statement. And in it, they said that older students benefit just as much from a cognitive break. So their break might not look like a kid, you know, going wild on a juggle gym. Their play or their cognitive break could be talking to your friends or maybe shooting some hoops. But it's all in the similar lines of just where you get to decide what you're doing.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
This is Kim.
Thank you so much for all of your work this year. I thought it was an excellent presentation and report. I had a quick question. I, and I also got a lot of tidbits from your report that I'm going to quote, take quotes from. So I just had a question, and I don't know if you can answer this, but I noticed that a lot of the examples of free play were social, like more than one kid playing together. And I didn't know if that was because it was your focus because we are dealing with schools and recess time, or if that free play was like a term of art that dealt only with kids socially interacting, or if free play also includes like a child playing by themselves?
Yeah, free play definitely involves a child playing by themselves. As you said, I think just because we're talking about a school environment, it tends to be more group stuff, but as long as the child is choosing it, you know, based on their own interest, and they're shaping it, and they're maybe using some creativity or imagination, and they're enjoying themselves, then that's considered play.
Yeah, I mean, like some of the aspects that you were discussing, dealing with that, the social interaction would obviously be missing, but the other benefits also, I mean, would be present.
This is Schneider Fapes.
Yes, for sure. I think just from a parent perspective, like this is something that I think we all have to shift our paradigm on, and that takes education to understand. This is not talking about like, let's let the kids do whatever they want, and it's going to be great. It's like, this is how we can allow kids to take reasonable risks in a safe environment. And that's what's best for their development and best for their safety in the long term. So I think if that kind of culture shift occurs, like in parents, then they can be supportive and understand, you know, what maybe the school district wants to do.
This is Hart.
Thank you. It was a tremendous amount of work, and I too really enjoyed reading the report and a couple of personal takeaways. I added the Blessing of a Skin Knee book to my reading list. It sounds like a great one to read. And I also appreciated loose parts, and it reminded me of holidays when the kids were more interested in bubble wrap and boxes than the actual gift. So, and I think, just to reiterate what you were just talking about, I think the education piece is so critical here. And I know you talked about in the report, you know, investigating the education with, you know, supervisors and teachers and investigating the parent education. And, you know, from my perspective, it might start with the parents and the families and getting them very comfortable with this shift in order for the supervisors on the playgrounds and the teachers to then feel that they have that understanding knowledge and support in kind of implementing this direction or shift in the paradigm. And I thought that everything that you put together in the report is just a tremendous launching pad for that education. So thank you. It's so much work, and it was so well-done.
Thank you very much, and that completely makes sense.
This is Palin.
Yeah, I will echo everyone's enthusiasm and its sense of resonance, and I agree. I wish, to your point, I wish, I hope, that all the parents in our community listen to this presentation, read this report because it's hard to deny that you're presenting with us. I loved, a few notes I took, I loved the story you shared about the reverse inclusion at Central. That's exciting, and we'd love to hear more, and I'm sure the other schools would too. I was struck by, I mean, we all know this, but you're documenting the decrease in amount of time spent in free play. I can't remember the numbers, but it's drastic, and it makes me think about our role as a board, like, okay, we keep adding things, expectations, and it's not just our district, it's schools, it's broader culture, and that takes away from something, and we'll set up a new report. And so here we find, without us maybe intending to, we've just lost all this important time. And you talked about how the value really increases at 30 minutes, and kids get lost in it, and that the real value hits after they've been in it for a while. And of course, that makes perfect sense, but it's hard to fit in. I thought that was really valuable. The only question I had, and I just have to sit with it, so I don't think there's anything for you to answer here, but the appendix five where it talks about bullies, it says, "When we step in and take the side of the victims against bullies, we are rewarding kids for thinking and acting like victims. They discover that the more upset they become, the harder we fight for them, so it pays to get upset." And I think there's truth and wisdom in there, but I also, I worry about the olden days when we didn't always intervene with bullying, and so I think there's a way to use what we've learned about that in the move. But thank you so much for an excellent report. Really excited. Anyone else? Great. Thank you so much.
I think we are moving on to the review of the Community Review Committee CRC bylaws.
Yes, in addition to all that work, there was more work accomplished by the CRC this year. Amy Wexler-Ross, past president of CRC, and Katie Lee have submitted to the board updates and revisions of the committee's bylaws for review and approval. The bylaws were last updated and revised in June of 2016, so we're really appreciative of Amy and Katie for really looking these over closely and making a recommendation to us.
Yes, and I won't take too much of your time. We were really just working hard to make sure that they were reflecting the CRC as it's currently run and operated, and so we did not really make any material changes other than a couple of things to the membership. We removed out, for example, the Villagewide PTO representative because everyone on the Villagewide PTO is a representative to begin with of, from another school. But we just added in some clarification on like contiguous terms and how you can go from an at-large member to like an exec member to a parent representative, and then clarified some of the timeline and just added in a little bit of variability in the timeline for topic selection and finalizing the committee members because it, while we would love for it to be finalized in May, it's typically, the remaining spots are filled over the summer. And provided a little bit more clarification on some of the subcommittee responsibilities. But overall, just really bringing it to current, this will be my fourth and final year on the CRC, so I was really excited to be able to participate in this process with Katie and leave the bylaws in great working condition.
Thank you. Once upon a time, I had the bylaws memorized.
I know. Yeah, exactly.
You're dreaming about them now, I'm sure. Are there any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Comments or feedback?
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
A ton of work again. Thank you so much.
I think we're moving on to 2024, 2025 student and staff planning.
Yes, and I will introduce Dr. Heather Glawacki, who will provide this update, as I mentioned earlier. This report highlights our anticipated changes to staffing and planning for the upcoming school year. Dr. Glawacki?
Yes, thank you. While this, we're all getting excited for the new school year at this point, our planning started several months ago, back in January. And so tonight's report is reflective of the work we've done to date, and we will be talking about, remind you briefly of our process, and then talk about some of the highlights that are embedded in the report. I'm the spokesperson tonight, but this work is a labor of love between the assistant principals, the principals, district admin, and a lot of information that we collect throughout the school year as we plan for the next school year. We monitor enrollment every week. We look at registration enrollment for students at each grade level within each school to see what adjustments we might need to make for the next school year. We've noted in past reports that student enrollment has been decreasing since fall of 2019. We seem to be seeing a bit of stabilization in that decrease. We're starting to sort of level off and then remain more consistent, which is exciting. We do try to keep our class size close to 24 in each of our four schools, knowing that we can go up to as much as 27 in grades three through three and four, grades five through eight, we tend to see more stable numbers. The economy of scale is so much greater, so student enrollment adjustments and fluctuations seem to have, it does have less of an impact in our actual staffing and planning. So that's our process. The report that we're sharing with you tonight is where we're at now. This is not done by any means. We'll continue to monitor this information throughout the summer. Even when our schools are closed, we are still working and we're watching it to some degree daily, depending on sections that might be closed and needing adjustments. Some of the highlights and things that we're planning for specific to next year include looking at grades five through eight in our non-homeroom classes. And there's a few areas within this element that I want to share tonight and highlight. Creative arts continues to be an area of focus. We have five core strands in grades five through eight. They include visual arts, performing arts, which was drama, music, tech applications, and digital media. Those have been consistent, and we continue to provide those, instruction in those areas. We do plan to adjust one of our current art positions that exist at the junior high to implement more of a global studies, digital media strand that currently exists in grades five through six. So we're planning to carry that forward in grades seven through eight. Do not worry, we're not taking art away. We will continue to have 2D and 3D art available for our seventh and eighth grade students, but we're slightly tweaking the approach and the focus for one of those positions to more of that tech route. This will allow our creative arts progression in grades five through eight to continue to have student exploration, a continuum of learning, and self-advocacy of interest because as the students get older, they get to self-select the courses in which they want to study and learn more about. And so we're continuing with those tenants of our creative arts trajectory. We also continue to monitor class size in those areas. So if we have very little interest in a particular class, that is something we have to consider. We can't, we run classes with seven or eight students in them. So we will, we continue to monitor that. World language is another area, a non-homeroom area that we look at. Student enrollment has impacted that. When we offer five world languages, which is a lot of choice for students, which we are proud of, and we have declining student enrollment, sometimes we don't have the student numbers to warrant continued study in five languages. I'm happy to say that right now, we're continuing with a plan of five language offerings for next school year for fifth grade, and those that have already started and will be joining sixth, seventh, and eighth grade will have those five languages as well. So it's just something that I continue to mention because in the event that we get to a point where one language is less popular and we can't run it, I want to be sure that that's on everybody's radar. But next year, we are fine. We are running five world languages. Math class is a homeroom or a core class, but it's something we talked a lot about last year in seventh and eighth grade. There was some discussion at this meeting last year about how we were staffing that. If you don't want to go back and look at the report, I can give you a brief highlight, which is in seventh and eighth grade, we offer multiple levels of math, more than any other grade levels in our district. And so we cheer math, we have accelerated math, lots of places for our students to go, leaving fewer students on team for math. Those class sizes tend to be pretty low. And so this year, with the help of Kate Dominique, we implemented a different structure. We kept the same number of math teachers that we've always had, but we use them more strategically to support the needs of students who remained in the team math classes, providing tier-two support for students who might need a little extra in specific skill areas. We're continuing to maintain our math teachers, the numbers that we have, and use them in a very strategic and targeted way to support the specific needs of students. So no change is anticipated in that area as well. Instructional coaches are a new element that we'll be adding in 2425. We recall last year at the elementary level, we added math support teachers. And these MST support teachers support students who excel and who may also need some extra support in math. So it was another layer of math support at the elementary level. By doing this, it allowed our differentiation teachers, our DSTs, the opportunity to not have such a focus on math and to really start working with teachers in groups of teachers. have such a focus on math and to really start working with teachers, in groups of teachers, to help with instructional approaches and supporting specific students. This evolution has really led us to redesigning our DST role. And we're moving to having instructional coaches, phasing out DSTs and moving into instructional coaches. Each elementary school will have one instructional coach, and there will be two instructional coaches, each at high press and at junior high. And then finally, to note, in special education, we're pretty stable with our staffing, which has been fantastic. We do have an opportunity to look for some more behavioral support and have redesigned one of our special education coordinator positions to be able to become that behavioral specialist and support students and teams of teachers to better address the unexpected behaviors that we're seeing from students. Like I said at the beginning, we are not done planning. This is just a status report of where we're at, and we will continue to watch where our student enrollment is and make adjustments as needed.
Board members, any questions? Okay, thank you. We are moving on to the regular and special education transportation contract renewals.
Thank you. So the board spent quite a bit of time talking about this at the May committee, the whole meeting, as Mr. Caesaretti summarized. The board this evening is asked to approve one-year contract renewals with North Shore Transit for regular and special education transportation services. The increase would be 6.25% to regular transportation and 7% to special education transportation. We're happy to answer any questions or thoughts the board might have. Corey, anything else that I might not have mentioned that you might like to?
No.
Board members, sorry, any questions, comments? Okay. This is the second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who wish to speak at this time? If not, we will continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Mrs. Hart, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated May 20, 2024. I move to approve the administrators' 2024-2025 contractual salary increase with an aggregate merit raise of 4.75% and benefits as detailed in the compensation and benefits plan for administrators. I move to approve the regular and special education transportation contract renewals with North Shore Transit for the 2024-2025 school year with a fee increase of 6.25% for regular transportation and 7% for special education transportation. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between April 30, 2024, and May 20, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $327,432.13. O&amp;M fund, $56,106.2. Transportation, $281,343. Capital projects, $307,458. For a total, all funds, $971,999.58. I move to approve the manual checks issued between April 30, 2024, and May 20, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $979,841.61. O&amp;M fund, $28,871.59. Transportation, $6,563.19. Capital projects, $55,255.94. For a total, all funds, $1070,532.33.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John C. is ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabez?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to conference items, is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there any good in welfare? May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel, special education, individual student matters, and collective negotiations?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel, special education, and individual student matters, and collective negotiations.
We forgot to approve the CRC bylaws. So, yep. I seek a motion to approve the District 39 CRC bylaws.
I move to approve the District 39 Community Review Committee bylaws.
Will the clerk, may I have a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabez?
Yes.
John C. is ready?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes, the motion carries. Now I'm seeking a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel, special education, individual student matters, and collective negotiations.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel, special education, individual student matters, and collective negotiations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabez?
Yes.
John C. is ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes, motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 8:17 PM.